I will call to order the City of Lake Mills City Council meeting for the 2nd of February 2021 to order. Could I get the roll call vote, please?
Ms. Quinno?
Here.
Mr. Foster?
Here.
Ms. Schmidt?
Yep, you're muted again.
Here, sorry.
Thank you. And Mr. Fritsch, please inform staff that we are unavailable for this evening's meeting.
Okay, thank you. Brings us to the Pledge of Allegiance. Those that can stand with me, let's say the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands.
All right. Item number four. For those that are online, listening, and hopefully here virtually also, last week, we lost somebody very important to the city council. Diane Fritsch, our city council vice president, passed away suddenly, and we are going to honor her with a moment of silence, and that will start now. Okay, thank you very much. For those that want to know a little bit more about Diane, there was a letter published today online for the Lake Mills leader, and it'll come out, hopefully, it'll be in this week's paper, mentioning all the things that she has done, excuse me, for our community, which, in her fifteen and a half years, has been quite a bit. So there will be more to come on that later, at a later date, at a different city council meeting. But if you're interested in all of the different things that she brought to this community, that letter is in the paper this week. All right, item five, correction and/or approval of the city council minutes of January 19th, 2021. Do I have a motion of adoption?
I move adoption of the minutes.
Thank you, Ms. Schmidt. Is there a second?
I second that.
Thank you, Ms. Quinno. Can we call a roll call vote, please?
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Ms. Schmidt?
Aye.
Ms. Quinno?
Aye.
Motion passed three zero.
Thank you. Moves on to item six, correspondence. Vicki, would you like to start?
I don't recall receiving any correspondence. Oh, I did get, I did get one email that I think everybody on the council received regarding last meeting's technical difficulties, among other things. But, but other than that, I don't think I received any correspondence.
All right, thank you. Michelle, do you have anything?
We did receive a very heartfelt correspondence from a fourth grader regarding the use of the century building, and I want to acknowledge his hard work in putting together that letter.
All right, thank you. Yeah, I received both of those, and I did write a formal response back to the young man, so he should be getting that in the mail in the next couple of days if he hasn't gotten it already. Okay.
Can I ask Mike one question? I did, I just, I'm not sure if this is the right time. Am I allowed to talk about any highlights from Parks Board until before the, the meeting minutes are approved, or can I do that after?
We kind of have to wait until those minute meetings are, are approved, so those won't be approved until your next Parks meeting.
Got it. Okay, thank you.
Okay. All right, that moves us on to questions and public comment. The public is encouraged to address the council at this time regarding items on the agenda. We don't have a public hearing tonight. Public comments may also be made at this time on items that are not on the agenda if you have registered with the city clerk before the meeting has been called to order. The state's open meeting law discourages actions by the council on items not listed on the agenda. Please keep your comments limited to three minutes and state your name and address when starting your comments, and fill out the assignments you provided if you're here in the, in the audience. For those attending online, please type your name and address in the chat feature. I don't think we have anybody that's going to speak here in the, in the audience. Is there anybody online that wishes to speak? If you wish to speak, and you're online, there's a little hand down the lower left-hand corner. You can raise your hand, and we can get you online. Okay, seeing none. We will move on to the city manager's report. Steve?
I don't have anything else tonight to report. I have three major items on the agenda, so I think we'll just move into those.
Okay, that sounds good to me. Yeah, you do have a few things that are major discussion items, so. Moves us on to item nine, which is acceptance of minutes from the Police and Fire Commission of August 20th, 2020, the Parks Board of November 18th, 2020, Senior Advisory Board of December 14th, 2020, and the Housing Authority Minutes of September 22nd, 2020. Those will go on record as written, and for those that are in the audience, if you're interested in some of these different minutes, specifically the Parks Board minutes, I know Michelle mentioned that, since the November 18th Park Board minutes have now been approved and put on record, they will show up on the Parks Board portion of the city website. So if you're interested in seeing the exact information that came out of those meetings, they will be there and available for you to view. Item ten, council business. And the very first one is the city manager appointment of Steve Fields to the Police and Fire Commission. Steve, this is yours, so I'll let you take it. And Mr. Fields is here, so thank you, Steve.
Yep, I'm hoping that this is a short appointment, but I'm appointing Steve Fields to the Police and Fire Commission to fill the spot of Dean Sanders, who we dearly miss. And we hope that we enjoy Steve's time there, thinking no meetings.
Yeah, okay. And because this is an appointment by the city manager, there's no action that is needed by the council at this time. And Mr. Fields is now appointed to the Police and Fire Commission. Thank you, sir. All right, board and committee appointments. This one is ours, and I am appointing Kelly Doherty to the Ethics Board. And I would entertain a motion of adoption to appoint Kelly Doherty to the Ethics Board.
I move adoption of Kelly Doherty to the Ethics Board.
Thank you, Ms. Schmidt. Second?
I second that.
Thank you, Ms. Quinno. Can we get a roll call vote, please?
Ms. Schmidt?
Aye.
Ms. Quinno?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Motion passed three zero.
And thank you, Ms. Doherty, if you're online or watching at home on TV. Thank you so much, and welcome to the Ethics Board. Item C, discussion on city council vacancies and timelines for appointments. Who is going to take that one for us? Steve, is it you, or is that going to be Dan?
Dan.
Yes, sir. Where's yours?
Okay. Thank you very much. I'm going to remove my mask. Okay, so, the council currently has a vacancy. That was created by the untimely death of Mrs. Fritsch. Outside of that, we've also received notice of two council members that are resigning effective March 1st, and that being Doug Fritsch and Ms. Schmidt. So, what we have set up for timeline on those appointments is a special meeting to fill the current vacancy on February 23rd at 5:00 PM. I believe there's also some, an event that's planned for kind of a memorial for Mrs. Fritsch on that night. Mr. Foster has put together a pretty respectful package, is, is, I guess, the way I'm going to refer to it, but I'll, I'll leave that to him to discuss. From there, we're looking, with the four that are remaining council members on that evening, we're looking to appoint for the remainder of the seats term that was vacated by Ms. Fritsch. Then, in the regular first meeting of the month of March, which is March 2nd, there will be a, a second appointment for the first vacancy that's being addressed, of the two that we've received notice on. Finally, in the subsequent second meeting of March, on March 16th, we'll fill the final spot. So the key thing is an appointment on the 23rd that will give us three, a quorum of the council moving into the March 2nd meeting, and that will be enough so long as everyone appears and is able to vote to affect an appointment for the first vacancy of the two resignation letters. And then subsequently, we'll have four council people moving into the meeting on March 16th to affect the appointment for the second vacancy of those letters. I, I don't recall which district is represented by each one. I believe that Ms. Schmidt's is District 2, and she is the first appointment on March 2nd. Mr. Fritsch is the second appointment and is representing District 1, and that would be March 16th. So that is the schedule. We're looking at appointments for all three council vacancies right now, under the state statute that the council adopted, following Mr. Fields' relatively recent resignation from the council, because he moved out of his district. Wisconsin Statute 17.23, the council does have quite broad discretion in how to address these vacancies, and we're up against it from an administrative and logistics standpoint. It, it is basically impossible to hold a special election in the, the month of April, and with the number of vacancies that, current or pending, we felt like there was a little bit more urgency, so we set up this relatively aggressive schedule to move forward. I know this is probably the first or second time that you've heard about this. I hope it's clear. I hope it's agreeable. If there are any questions, we can certainly discuss.
Thank you for that explanation. Yeah, it, everything that we're doing does fit along with the, the state statutes and with our own ordinances, and it will keep us in a position to where our city council seats are still going to be staggered as good as they are right now, so we don't end up in a position where we have very, very limited knowledge as a majority of the folks that are on the city council. So that's one of the things that we're trying to avoid. We're, we're trying to keep a little bit of resident knowledge available, and that's why we've had the city council seats come up for election as we've had them in the past, and this will help us maintain that. And for those that are listening out there, some of the reasons why we're losing folks, the majority of it is the folks are making changes in their lives, and they're moving, and it, unfortunately, that, that puts them in a situation where they can no longer hold their seat, and I, I don't blame them one bit for doing what they're doing. I appreciate their service that they've done so far, and I wish them all the best. And hopefully, we can fill these seats with just as competent folks that are here looking to help better our community and make this a place to, to live and raise our families, and keep us physically sound while we're doing it. So with that being said, all of that information that Mr. Drescher just outlined is on the city website. It outlines the different dates for stuff that has to be turned in, and it outlines the different dates on when we will make these decisions on who will fill these different seats in the future here. And so far, it looks like there's been some good candidates out there that are, that are popping up, and it's going to make a tough decision for, for us to pick from them. So hopefully, this will give those folks that, if, if they're picked and they've never been on a council before, it'll give them some good experience, and it will hopefully set them up that they, if they find out they like it, they'll run for reelection. If not, they've had their experience on it, and they can walk away knowing they helped the community and not feel, not feel bad about it. So I look forward to this process, and in the future, as Mr. Drescher mentioned, we are going to have a small ceremony, as, as big as we can with the COVID times, but we're going to have some presentations on the 23rd of February, and that will all be part of a virtual service that will present some stuff to the Fritsch family to commemorate Diane's time here, and hopefully, folks can attend virtually and listen to what, what she's accomplished. Is there anything else you want to say, Mr. Wilkie, or any of the other two council members? Somebody's speaking? Okay, good. I thought somebody was speaking. All right, all right, we'll move on then. Let's see here. Item D, discussion decision on request for... Class B liquor and class B beer license retail. Could I get that read for me, please, Misty?
City Council motion 21-1-1-1 authorizing the granting of new regular class B beer and class B liquor licenses to HG Restaurant Group LLC for designated premises at 345 Sandy Beach Road, Lake Mills, Wisconsin, and appointing Tori Smith as agent.
All right.
And I can just make note, I'm actually going to change that motion number to 21-2-1-1. It was printed as 111 and should be...
You're right. Okay. Okay, yeah. Office, obviously, you can reprint that, and we can sign it then tonight. Okay, so looking for a motion of adoption for 21-2-1-1?
I move to adopt motion dash, I'm sorry, what was the number again?
21-2-1-1.
21-2-1-1.
Got it, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, Vicki. So for the folks listening, this is for the Crawfish Junction for this summer for their trailer down at Sandy Beach, because it looks like we'll be having another year of trailers at the beach for serving food and drinks and stuff like that. Is there anything else anybody wants to add before we call the roll call vote?
Last year, we issued contracts, knowing that we would not be ready to have a, a restaurant out there again. They did have an option to renew that contract for their food truck out there, which Tori did, and he's also asking to get the liquor license again, and so it's, we all feel comfortable with that request.
Yep.
And I, if I can just point out, Mr. Foster, that last year, they had a part-time liquor license. This time, this is for a regular, which they would be applying for now. It would still expire at the end of June, so they'll be a part of the renewal group as well if they're, if they're approved this evening.
Okay. Yeah, and I, I didn't hear any issues of anything happening out there because of it. I believe Mick's on the line, aren't you, Mick?
Yes, sir.
Do you hear anything? Did you have any issues at all with that out there for liquor?
No, we didn't hear of any problems associated with their business.
Perfect. Okay. Unless there's anything else, I will ask Misty to call a roll call vote, please.
Ms. Quinno?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Ms. Schmidt?
Aye.
Motion passed three zero.
Thank you. Item E, discussion decision on bid award contract 2-2020 Sandy Beach Boat Launch. Could I get that read, please?
City Council motion 21-2-1-2 authorizing the city manager to execute an agreement for the construction of the Sandy Beach Boat Launch.
All right, I will entertain a motion of adoption for 21-2-1-2?
I move adoption of motion 21-2-1-2.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I second.
Thank you, Ms. Quinno. Okay, Steve, are you going to run this one, or is this Betsy, or?
No, actually, Brandon is on tonight.
Oh, yeah, he is. There he is. Hi, Brandon.
Hello, everybody.
The four is yours.
Great, so the bids came in last week. They came in well. We got six bids. They were arranged from 7:33 to about 8:50. There was nice steps up in between each bid, so I don't know, kind of a good bid result. You know, there wasn't a lot of money left on the table by the low bidder, and, and it, you know, kind of came in generally underneath, well, I guess all the bids were underneath the engineer's estimate, so we felt like we've got good prices. Also, you know, the, I think it's noteworthy that 7:33 is quite a bit less than we have for the grants, so we had been awarded $960,000 for the grants, but those grants can cover professional services such as engineering, planning, and we believe some of the archaeology. I'm not sure, Steve, if you had checked on that yet. So that's also good news, because specifically, the archaeology, you know, was kind of the level that we had to get into was kind of unknown at the time we applied for the grants, so we should be able to cover a good chunk of that as well. So I think all in all, it was favorable. The low bidder was Forest Landscaping and Construction right out here out of Lake Mills, so I'm sure they'll do a great job for us. They've done boat launches before in the past, and obviously, many other types of construction for the city, so looking forward to getting underway with construction coming up soon.
Thanks. So if, if this gets awarded tonight, we could look at the possibility of March start timeframe, depending on weather?
Correct, yeah. I mean, once this gets awarded, we'll circulate the contract documents, get a pre-construction meeting scheduled, and that's usually when we see the contractors scheduled. They do have a pretty good incentive to start as soon as they can. The completion date for the project was right before Labor, I'm sorry, Memorial Day. So, you know, they, I'm sure they'd like to get going. They will be restricted by frozen conditions at the site, but they may be able to do some, some of the in-water work if they, if they want to. They could also potentially create a dry condition to do some of the in, in-lake work, so we'll have to see what they present, but I would imagine sometime by mid-February here, we'll have a pre-con schedule.
So if there's, sorry, if we're under what our grants are, would we go back and look at any of the other portions of it, such as the invasive aquatic species, and look to maybe do some automated things there instead of? Go ahead, Steve. I see you get your finger up.
I wanted to make sure Brandon knew I was going to talk, answer that question, but the construction costs were under, but we had, we can still pay for a large percentage of the, or we're going to pay for all the engineering work, and then we could capture a pretty good chunk of the archaeological with grants. So I was anticipating that, you know, if we got closer to the end and we saw what we had, the debate would then be, do we borrow less money, or do we go ahead and add those items? We did discuss that. I did want to do that. No, I wanted to see at the end, because we, we have been discussing some issues related to, I, you guys have obviously noted, we've already had two big water main breaks in, in Lake Street this year. Since winter started, we had two earlier, and the street is nothing but a patch anymore, and so the debate is, is adding that, what is it, 600, 700 feet of water main to the West Lake Street project. That would kick that cost up quite a bit, so maybe we could shift that money over to that other project. So I'm, I'm trying to watch and see what's going to happen at the, throughout the course of the year here.
Yeah, and whether or not we're allowed to kick some of that over. I, I'm making the assumption that we would have to return whatever's not, not used, or?
Well, what I'm talking about is, is we're going to use all the grant money for eligible grant projects.
Okay.
And then, but we had, we had anticipated with the cost of the project being higher, that we would have to pay 100% of that archaeological out of debt. We could fund a significant portion of that archaeological. We'd have some debt funds we could move over. That, that could be done, because we haven't actually borrowed the funds yet. It's when we borrow the funds that we officially designate how they're going to be used.
Got it. Okay, yeah, we'll have to take a good, hard look at that one, because we may be able to lower our, our, our funds that we're asking for. Okay, let's see here. We have a motion of adoption. Does anybody else have any questions on this? You should have all been able to, go ahead, Ms. Quinno. Go ahead.
Um, out of curiosity, I'm looking at the second page of the document that you shared. In the, in the breakdown of what the costs are, I see decorative pole assembly. What, what is that?
Uh, that is a light pole. So that's the, the parking lot is lit, and that's the same exact pole as you have throughout the Main Street project with the mast arm. The one that's the length of the project, it's set for the downtown area, so it's that kind of black decorative mast arm pole that you have on Main Street. So they'll, I'm trying to remember, I think there was maybe eight of them.
Yeah, that's, that's what I'm looking at, is it looks like there's eight.
Yeah, so they...
Seven, seven.
Seven, okay. Yeah, so those are kind of spread out around the parking lot to, you know, provide lighting for safety and just make sure people aren't hitting things with their boats and trailers, or try, try to make sure, you know?
So we're just trying to make sure that it looks more consistent with what's going on downtown with that lighting, so it's basically the same? Is that what I'm hearing you say?
Yeah, yep. There's some discussions, at least at the staff level, that, you know, we, there was a desire to provide lighting of some kind, and so it, it made sense, I guess, to a lot of people to provide that same light. You know, it's a nice-looking light. You could start to create kind of like a city brand, if you will. I mean, this is phase one of, you know, of potential. I know there's a lot of future things that would need to happen, but, you know, it could be phase one of the sizable redevelopment of Sandy Beach Park there, so.
Sure.
You know, to start off with something that's already been chosen by, I believe, council had quite a bit of interaction with what to pick for the highway lighting, you know, that looks nice. It just seemed like it'd be a good thing to kind of start off down there with that light, and, you know, maybe future phases would incorporate something like that as well.
Sure. Sorry, I'm new to councils. I'm sure you can pick up my mic. Not even a case, so let me ask one question for you. I noticed also that we're removing the existing fence and putting in another chain link fence. Is that chain link fence, I'm assuming, of course, that there's going, it's in better condition than what is going in, but also, is it going in a different location than where it's currently, or is, I mean, I, I'm not pretty, off the top of my head, to the actual, like, how it's set up? So can you elaborate a little bit on that, please?
Yeah, so the, the parking lot is kind of a rectangle, that parallel Sandy Beach Road, and on the north side of that rectangle is going to be where the new fence is. So there'll be no fence in between Sandy Beach Road and the parking lot. And actually, what I personally think is a benefit to some people is that there, there will be a section of the, of the lakeshore there next to the boat launch, just to the west of it. And actually, what I personally think is a benefit to some people is that there will be a section of the lakeshore there next to the boat launch, just to the west of it, that will be accessible from the roadway that you won't have to, you know, right now the beach is pretty much fenced off. But the new fence will go on the north side of the parking lot and it's put in to continue to separate beachgoers from the boat launch area, both from keeping those two activities separate. But then also, the city is gonna continue to charge people to use the beach, so we didn't want this, you know, four hundred foot wide, just kind of open area to the beach. So we're trying to kind of limit access a little bit, at least at this point still.
So I know, because I have children, that the boat launch is like smack in the middle between the beach, where the sand is, and the other part of the, of what I don't, it's part of Sandy Beach, but it's not the beach part, that they use for swim lessons. How much of a disruption is this going to be or are we gonna be able to put the chain link in a way that will kind of make it easy for people to navigate and make it, well, make it easier for people to navigate?
That is one of the primary reasons we're doing this project. We're moving the boat launch to the west edge of the beach essentially. And with the existing launch ramp and small docks there will stay, but we're actually gonna remove part of the asphalt that creates that existing boat launch and create more of a pedestrian path there. So that will completely eliminate any vehicular traffic kind of in the middle of Sandy Beach. That was one of the main reasons for the project. Like you're saying, you had the bathrooms and the playground down the other side of the boat launch from the beach. And, you know, everybody was driving into the boat launch, right where everybody was trying to pay their beach fees and-
Right. It's kind of cluttered.
Yeah.
Okay, I appreciate your clarification. Thank you.
Yeah, no problem.
Yep. If you have any more questions on that, Michelle, we've got, we've got plenty of documentation for you to look through or we have answers. So feel free to ask. Go ahead, Steve.
You know, we still collect boat launch fees, but as always, it's a box there and you'll have to pay.
Yeah, so a few things that are happening down there. Obviously, getting the boat launch out from the middle of the beaches and all the play areas, so we don't have cars driving through there. Plus giving a more efficient and better boat launch for the folks that are boating on the lake. We aren't giving access to more boats than we currently have. We actually have less spots than we're truly allowed by DNR to have for boat parking. So it's not like we're looking at making it more efficient to get more boats on the lake. That's not the plan for it. But we're also adding invasive aquatic species tools to the location to keep the traveling pests from going from lake to lake and river to river. And hopefully, we'll have a much bigger, longer, more enjoyable beach area for folks to come down there and enjoy along with preventing some of the drainage problems that we had in the past. And actually, taking better biofilter and biofiltration of runoff water and filtering it much better than we've ever had before, before it gets into the lake. So those are the main drivers behind what we're doing for phase one. So if there's anything, unless there's anything else, I am gonna ask Ms. D to call the roll call vote.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Ms. Schmidt?
Aye.
Ms. Quinno?
Aye.
Motion passed three zero.
Thank you all, and I hope this, I hope this makes a big improvement in the very first year. Let's see here. Item F, discussion on composting yard waste. Steve, this is yours. You're muted, sorry.
This is mine, and it's a push for the council to deal with this issue this year. In two thousand and thirteen, we started this conversation. At that point in time, I was asked how long we had. It was five years. We've actually made it seven. We're not gonna make it eight. So we need to do something. I went over a lot of the details and a lot of the issues. Staff has been working on it diligently over the last two years and had a lot of meetings. But it's time that it's something that moves up the council list of things that need to be done. I tried to provide as much information, but I think that as we work through this year and add into the budget, some sort of composting item, yard waste site, has to be dealt with. I will note too that that acreage between the Conservation Club and County Highway V sold is being subdivided and they're building houses back there. So it'll make it a more difficult situation for us there too. So I just wanted to give you an opportunity to get back up on it, start thinking about it. If you want to have study sessions or some other type of activity, we can get everybody together and start going over it. Does any of the staff have anything they want to add, like Paul or Dwayne?
Thanks, Steve. Sure, I think one thing to just get a glimpse of some of the tally work that staff has been doing. They've been tracking the number of loads that have been taken from the Stony Road site in the last two years. And they're averaging about eight hundred loads a year. So in a sense, that's about fifteen loads a week. Just to give you, and that's not every week, but if you take the entire year, it's about fifteen, fifteen loads a week. So there's a lot of time involved and there's also then where is this eight hundred loads of material going on every given year? I'll hand that back, just to give you a scope of how large of an issue we're talking about.
So how are we, are we doing any sort of chipping or chopping and stuff like that before we take those loads out there to help with the composting? Or is this just all as it shows up at the yard waste site, we get it on the truck and it rolls out there? And it decomposes at will based on however we threw it out there?
Right now, we're not doing a composting site. We're burying it. And so if you look at it, it's getting to be a nice sized mound, which the Conservation Club kind of appreciates, getting a little separation between the residential areas and that. But it's now to the point where we're looking at areas that are environmentally sensitive and we really need to move on to another site.
So environment, excuse me, environmentally sensitive to yard waste, grass clippings and fertilizers and stuff like that, is that what we're really referring to?
More like wetlands.
So that stuff getting into wetlands or just we're encroaching into the wetlands?
We're getting to the point where we're gonna be encroaching into wetlands.
All right.
If I may, just real quick, the only thing I want to add, and Steve highlights it in his memo, is that we don't get just yard waste. We get a lot of other stuff that it costs us money to get rid of. And so we have to find some way to control a little better what actually ends up at that site. And to me, that's probably the second biggest issue, not, you know, we have the compost and the waste that we have to deal with. But then we also have stuff that just really shouldn't be at a yard waste site. Thank you.
Yeah, and thanks. We've talked about that in the past and we've discussed different ways to prevent that. And, yeah, we haven't come up with a great solution yet. So my thought is we're probably gonna need some work sessions first to figure out how we can protect the drop-off, which is gonna most likely cost money unless we can figure out some very inventive ways to manage that. I don't know, maybe take the fence from the beach and use that. Just a thought. I don't know if it would work or not. I'm just throwing it out there. But, so I see that as our first problem, controlling what's going in there and who's dropping it off in there. And then second, figuring out what we want to truly do with that, is burying it the best thing? Or is there another way to compost it that's more effective and more environmentally friendly that we can look at?
We have debated all these. Burying it is no longer an option for us. You have to have a permitted site. So there are a couple in the area, but there are quite a few hauls. I mean, they're quite a long distance haul and they cost more, they charge per load. So those fifteen loads average are now gonna take up a day hauling and they're gonna cost us, you know, a substantial amount of money. So we have to determine how we want to flip that. Do we want to do the composting on site? What are we gonna do with the composting? What kind of site are we gonna construct? Are we gonna contract with another company to do all the hauling and do all the composting and what's that gonna cost? You definitely want to have some type of site control, as Paul's noted, so you're gonna want a fence. You're gonna have to have some sort of cameras. You're gonna have to have some way of having them be able to get in and out. So you probably have to issue them some type of card or have stickers and a guy on site. Historically, you know, we used to have a fence one dot right here at this municipal building. And they would just dump their illegals right at the edge of the fence.
At the edge of it, yeah.
Yeah, so it's, you have all kinds of issues that we're gonna have to deal with and everyone has to deal with it and we're trying to figure that out. And how we want to totally handle it, I imagine this is the right time to talk about it because Vicky and Doug are gonna be gone. Michelle hasn't been involved in the conversation as much. And so you are gonna be kind of the lead point on the conversation here of figuring out, you know, what's been said and where we're headed. But I know that from a staff standpoint, we're getting, we're getting to the point where we're getting highly concerned.
Yeah, I talked to San William's boss the other day and they are considering opening up more state aid for things like this. I'm just kind of curious, do we know of any programs that DNR has that assists with this type of facility? I don't remember hearing of any. I can put my feelers out into the DNR to find out, but I'm just curious if you guys know of anything that they have out there that may be able to help with something along those lines? Because obviously, that, what we're trying to do affects the environment as much as anything that we do.
We have not heard of any grants available. What's happened to us is if it's a low to moderate income, we don't qualify. It has to be something that's more of a public facilities, that's just available for the specific benefits, like creating a composting site. A lot of those went away in the early two thousands after it had been a place program that required us to stop landfilling. It'd been in place for about fifteen years, so, yeah, we're kind of behind the eight ball by about fifteen years.
Can I ask, Steve?
You sure can.
Sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt you. Do you need to go, Mike?
No, no, go ahead.
Okay, so I'm looking over your paperwork and you had mentioned that we're encroaching on the wetlands. Are you talking about Tyranina wetlands or where are we talking that we're encroaching?
The, you know where the Conservation Club is?
Yes.
It's back behind the party line there, kind of up against the interstate. And they're a group of lowlands that basically incorporate the Conservation Club. And we've been kind of working on the southern, south, east edge of it to try and build a high berm between, to kind of shield the Conservation Club from the, from the residuals around them. But at this point in time, we're about, I'd say, ten to fifteen feet higher than all the surrounding ground. And to the north where the wetlands are, we're probably twenty, twenty-five feet above it. And as you continue to rise up, that crown keeps, tends to push out. So it's getting to the point now where it's getting close enough to that wetlands that we need to say, okay, we need to find another spot.
So instead of finding another spot, is there, are we proposing that there's another way of handling this waste?
Yeah, I think we'd look into any option, but those are gonna be expensive.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, go ahead, Steve.
We looked at multiple options, composting ourselves, hauling to a neighbor, landfilling at a couple of landfill areas around here that can still take it. We looked at the company out of Madison that does this and they'll pick it up for us. But they are all substantially more than what we pay right now. We're kind of on the super cheap. Taking advantage as long as we possibly can and now we're at the point now where we gotta spend a couple bucks and figure out how we're gonna handle this.
So we've put it off for fifteen years and now it's time for us to pay the bill? Wondering about if it's time for us to start using education on how people can reuse their yard waste. As an example, like, I know for quite a few folks where I live, we, you know, we're upset when we couldn't take our grass or greenery to the dump site that, you know, for many years we could, not knowing, of course, the whole situation that you're referring to. So I know that a lot of people want to have their yards look nice and it's okay to have your yard look nice. But can you, you can take that stuff and put it into a compost bin. If we increase education on composting, thereby decreasing the amount of waste that we have going to the site, would that help things any?
I imagine it would. There's some, you know, there are some things that we take that wouldn't work. People wouldn't be able to compost. The leaves and the grass clippings probably could. But the, you know, there's a time when there are so many leaves and so much bulk in a lot of our yards. Because no matter what anybody says, we have a lot of trees in Lake Mills.
A lot of trees. We are a tree city.
Yep, and so it gets pretty heavy and intense, so, you know, like in the fall, we're hauling a lot of loads. And we make it available to farmers if they want it. But, you know, we don't get a lot of that. We get some. We do make it available to a couple private property owners who have the ability to use it. But there's a lot of leaves and the brush, the amount of brush is just incredible and that doesn't compost well in a backyard. And so you, you know, and then we also haul concrete and other types of rocks and other types of materials that come out of sites that are considered recyclable by constructionally standards.
So this is not just that, like, just not just nature yard waste. It's every kind of waste that could possibly be put into that spot.
Yeah, yeah. The, one of the combinations that went in when they stopped allowing you to landfill yard waste at landfill sites, they also put out the no burns, because people were going to burning and then that created a lot of other problems. So the combination, the way that city's dealt with it is they went to picking up, to creating these landfill sites or these drop-off sites and then either composting or hauling it to a site that could bury it. The sites that could bury it are getting fewer and fewer and fewer. And so, you know, looking at some type of long-term, at least, composting is going to be wise. It's just that, you know, pretty soon, everybody, every municipal is gonna be composting. And I, you know, then you have, you know, how long could you hang onto the compost and what are you gonna use? what are you going to use it for? So always worries in mind, you know, today we think it's a good idea and tomorrow we got compost, we got a mountain of compost somewhere.
I'm just wondering if, do you have an idea or a series of different things that we have researched, maybe that, again, being new, I'm not aware of, so therefore I'm not asking because I'm trying to be a pain, I'm just asking because of my hearsay? Like, an idea of what possible solutions we could have, a cost benefit analysis for those? Because I really feel like, yes, it's going to cost us money. This is a no duh situation, but what's the benefit to it? And what, you know, what options do we have so that we can really make the best decision? Because I don't want to make the decision based on the cost alone. I want to make a decision based on the cost, the benefit to the community, the benefit to the earth, the benefit to everything. So is that something that has been done or is that something that needs to be done?
No, we've had a report and the council's looked at it. We have, as Duane has noted, we've added a lot of detail to it. We probably can provide a lot better one. This is a memo that you will get at your next meeting. It's called Medium Cheddar. And it's going to talk about, you know, we have staff look at it and say, what's the most efficient process? And we're going to give you that. And then you guys have to figure out what is really best for the community.
Right.
That's not our job. Well, I'm going to tell you that we're going to haul to the landfill in Waterloo and this is what it's going to cost us. This is what it's going to cost us to compost on site. And, you know, if we give it away versus if we can sell it for something, those are kind of items that you have to kind of figure out and are going to be hard to project. The... I can tell you that based on previous conversations, we would like to have a site of a minimum of twenty acres. We would like to have it fenced. We need to be able to allow the leachate to flow into a detention basin or some kind of control basin so that the water that's flowing out of there isn't running into a, directly into some stream or lake. And we need to have cameras and an access system in place. At that point in time, we can haul for a while until we determine what's in our best interest. But we have to at least have some acreage. At that point, you know, debating, and I truly believe in the long run, you're going to end up compost. I don't think you can have any choice. But at least in the interim, getting a site up, getting it ready and getting to the minimum point that allows us to be prepared for that. So don't under, don't go out by ten acres because it's not enough to compost on.
Yeah, it's really up to us to take in the information we're given and then really figure out what questions we want to ask and how we want to frame those questions based on what we think is the best. So having some working sessions for this in the future, I think is, yeah, it's the process we have to go with, at least right now to start with. Get that information together and then have an open working session that's open to the public.
Mr. Foster?
Yes, ma'am.
I would highly recommend that before any working, work sessions are scheduled, that all of the new members that you're going to be having on the council, review all of the meetings that the Public Works Board's spent a lot of time getting presentations and discussing compost. So if they could view the videos from those meetings, then you're all going to have a base knowledge of what's going on before so that you can move forward.
Yeah, and that makes sense. And even if it gets to a point where you could view them on a session like this together, it might be beneficial. That way we can write and have the questions that we get after listening to those sessions right away and hopefully we can all discuss them and talk about them. But I think that's a good, good idea, good thoughts, and I appreciate that input, Miss Schmidt. So my take on this is you said we're going to get something in the next, next meeting. And then we'll sit down and we'll have to figure out, once we get all the, whoever's new on the council situated and however it all flushes out, we'll have to get a time and make time to have people view those. Michelle, you should be able to go view those at any time. Those should be out, available on the city website to look at. You may have to ask some questions of the staff to figure out which ones to look at, but they should be able to help point you in the right direction if you're having issues with it. Anything else, Steve?
No. The next meeting that memo that I have out is more about council, staff, city manager relations, but it does tap into that, you know, what we do versus what you guys do and how we time together.
Yep, perfect. Yeah, that'll be beneficial and that'll have to, well, I'm assuming you give that memo to each new member?
I will.
Okay.
It just kind of, I've had it out for years in another form and I've reworked it and put it out for this situation that we've just experienced.
Yeah. Okay. All right, that moves us on to item G, discussion on city fees. Who's going to take this one? Steve is a she, it's from Steve.
Yep, that's from me.
Yep.
Again, this is a situation where I've been here twenty years, we have never sat down and discussed fees. We are now in the twentieth year of tax levy freeze and we need to figure out some, you know, there's some pressures that we're feeling in some areas. Just ask your chief of police what he feels and I can tell you that every other department head is feeling the same thing. And so what types of fees should we be charging? What types of fees shouldn't we be charging? What amount should we be charging? Those are questions that we all should be thinking about and putting into a package eventually. I'm, you know, I'm comfortable, that's another one for a work session. It's another one to help get new council members up to speed on how things operate. But it's also a very, there, I don't know if you looked, but those criteria bring in a lot of pretty deep issues that people probably don't think a lot about when they're talking about fees.
Well, yeah, you know, a lot of these that I looked at in there used to be things that we would see from state and county aid and people didn't think about them, but now a lot of that has gone away too. And that's why I'm hoping the legislature will be open to returning or building up some of that state aid again. So we don't have to either raise these fees or create new fees, but I agree with you in the interim, we will have to pick and choose and look at them very closely just to see if it's something we truly need to do in the community.
Are the red ones, are the ones that are in red font in particular, the ones you're concerned about, Steve?
No, those are ones that Dustin made a suggestion on as to what he felt or, well, I should say that Greg or Dustin or someone on the staff made a suggestion that these would be the most appropriate charges. So...
Okay.
There are a couple in there that... Fees that we need to have a discussion on as far as, you know, like right-of-way fees, we're working through that now. We have a pretty good idea of what we think is appropriate. We have experienced a lot of people digging in our right-of-ways, creating holes, working in our right-of-way, damaging the pavement, and then they just drive away and leave us with thousands of dollars with a roadway damage. So there is a thing for bond, for what's the appropriate amount of the bond, how should it be structured, how should we require them to fix the hole when they leave? Those are a lot of questions that we're trying to work through. There are... The new zoning code has a zoning permit, which I think is appropriate. We've never set a fee for it, so I think we need to set a fee for that. The building permits, our building permits are about as low as they get. Our guys do quite a few other communities and know everybody else in the area who's charging and they historically are the lowest in the area and we're the lowest of the low. So those are some suggestions. I think the, you know, Dustin and Brian went through and looked at some of the development fees and made some suggestions for increasing there to be comparable with other communities similar to us. So that's kind of, there's some other ones that, you know, like the liquor license, some of the occupational license fees and those types of things that we're, again, very low on. I got information if you want to look at those for comparisons, but generally we stuck to the building permits and the development fees.
And I'm the kind of guy, when I look at them, I say to myself, what is the real need to raise these? Is it a, are we losing money in the process if we don't raise these fees rather than just looking at another community and saying, well, they have it at this and we should do the same? So when you look at these, look at these really closely and really think about how you want to answer them to figure out whether or not it is truly something that should be an extra burden on the constituents based on us as a city not having funds to provide the, this stuff that is required for our citizens, for their health, their welfare, for their safety and for their basic well-being in a community. So can we still pay for fire? Can we still pay for the police? Can we still have EMS? Are roads still in good shape? Or are we truly losing money by not raising these fees? So those are just some of the things that I think about when I look at these things. Where does that burden truly lie? Should that lie on the hands of the individuals that are making the issue such as Steve mentioned, people tearing holes in the street and then us fixing it? Well, in that case, yes, definitely, an impact fee or some kind of fee is very much appropriate.
In general, the vast majority of fees that we charge are required by state law not to charge any more than what it costs us. So that's what we try and stick with. And I'll guarantee you that it's the same with every other city in the state. So we're not, our employees aren't making that much less that we can afford to have that much of a difference between us and them. We try and get an idea of what it is and we have made some recommend, you know, we haven't made some recommendations, but if we decide to get into this a lot more, we could really start to look at it hard. And I know that Ms. Misty has before made recommendations on some fees that she thought we were way undercharging for and that it did cost us at least as much, if not more than what we were charging. And I think that that's consistent, but I, in the area that are the red ones, I know we're losing money. The...
Yeah. And if that's the case, then yes, we definitely have to take a look at them and I agree with you, but I think this is going to be some more long nights trying to talk and discuss this stuff. So everybody be ready with your coffee. Is there anything else you want to mention on this, Steve, before we move into our next item?
No, I think that, you know, unless you have any questions on the memo, I try to give you as much of an idea of all the theoretical items that could be involved in charging fees and kind of the public choice theory that has moved a lot of cities to fees, particularly seeing as, you know, they're trying to shift away from property taxes into more of a user-based type of...
Yeah, and that's exactly what happened to us, especially with the state aid and all the different things that have been dropping lately. So, yeah. Okay. Then let's move on to item H, discussion on the staffing study report. And this is something Mr. Wilkie and I have talked about in the past because we are going to have some retirements and things like that here coming up in the very near future for city staff. And we really need to take some time and look at how the staff is built and where there may be either deficiencies or things that could be done more efficient or better. Steve?
Yeah, we're, I would say we're a pretty lean organization. We do a lot of things with not a lot of people and not a very deep staff. I know that there are some areas where we have gaps, you know, there may be areas where we have too many people. I don't know, sometimes the organization could be reshifted a little bit. I know that we have a lot of police officers that are doing things that aren't really police work. So if we added like an IT person and an office manager that included some evidence stuff, we could probably put our police officers out into, back onto the street and out of the office. Those would be some advantages, so we could look at that type of stuff. Eventually you're going to have to look at some new police officers, you're going to have to look at street department, parks department, finance. They're all in a situation where they're pushing the bounds. And I can tell you, Betsy and her staff work a lot hours and they have to keep up and if you lose some staff, it changes the whole thing. And same with, you know, like the last year with elections. Elections were crazy. I don't know if anybody realizes how much work elections take, but there's...
Well, yeah, that and money, how much they cost.
Yeah, and so it's a real eye-opener to figure out exactly all, when you spend all day long for weeks and weeks and weeks figuring out exactly how the ballots go and then getting them printed and then getting them brought in and mailing out all the ballots to all the people who put in requests, finding all the ones that are, you know, going to different places and then getting them all in and figuring out, did they fill them out properly? You know, I know Misty and her staff spent a lot of time looking at those ballots and calling people up and saying, hey, there's something wrong with this, do you want to come in and correct it or not? So those are the, you know, there's a lot of things that go into elections and, you know, then she handles all kinds of other things. They handle grants and they handle all the licenses and fees and records, minutes. So it's just a, we're not, we're, you know, probably going to hit seven thousand here in the very near future. We're not going to be small anymore. We're going to have to figure out how to handle it. I have a, Duane and I have been working on a report that talks about the cost of infrastructure per lineal foot. And there, I think there are two thousand two hundred eighty taxable parcels in the city of Lake Mills. And there, I think there are 2,280 taxable parcels in the city of Lake Mills. And we have 35 miles of street. And when you subtract or when you divide the, when you convert the miles into feet and then divide it by the taxable parcels, there's 171 and a half lineal feet of street per lot. And that's because, well, let's look at East Lake Park Place that runs between the Fish Hatchery and the school district. There's a lot of street there that, no taxable parcels. And then up at the end, it's got the Mormon church. There's no taxable parcel. And so you, you know, downtown, you got the municipal building, you got Commons Park, you know, you got Sandy Beach, you got a lot of road, no taxable parcels. So all of a sudden you got these lots supporting all this area. And so you have to figure out now what it costs per lineal foot, per year to maintain those streets. And so you were on a 60-year maintenance program, roughly 60, 64-year. So you take kind of the average of all the maintenance over those 60 years and then you divide it across all those lots on a, and you get your average cost per lot. And all of a sudden you're figuring out how much taxes you have to collect per lot per year to pay for that. And remember, that's not all for streets. You take that tax that those lots are paying and for us, the $1,200 or something we get out of the average tax parcel is paying for police and fire and administration and library and all the street maintenance. So it's, it's a pretty intense...
Yeah, correct me if I'm wrong, Steve, but I think some of those basic numbers can actually be figured out and found per residence with our new, um, budgeting software. Cause I was going through that, we were going through that last year on the budget process and you can actually put in your, what you paid and it will actually break it down for you, how much went to police and fire and all this stuff in the new, the new budgeting software that's, that's out there and is available for our, uh, citizens to look at.
It, it does to a certain extent. It doesn't, it gives you what your property tax was, but it doesn't, it, it doesn't shift it out into how much was debt, how much was actual property tax, how much was state aid, how much was county aid? That's what, that's what I'm trying to figure out, bring it in.
Gotcha. Yeah, but it will show you based on what you paid for your taxes, how much you paid and how much went to police service and stuff like that. Uh, I think the biggest issue with that is folks will put their full tax bill in there and that's not, not gonna give you the right answer. You really have to put only the city tax portion in there. But you can figure out close to, uh, close to the dollar amount, what you're, what you paid for in the community, if you're really interested in that. But I agree, there is a, a need for a staffing study, um, especially once the, the new census comes out to figure out where we're at. And if we do fit, I, I don't know if, once we hit 7,000, what, um, what other requirements we're gonna be required to put into place. You know, similar to like hitting the 4,000, we had to put the police and fire commission in and things like that. So I don't know, I don't know if we have anything like that coming up in the future that we may end up doing.
No, I, my, my expectation is, is that when we hit, when you're at 7,500, you're gonna have to start planning for the new lump that you're gonna be eating when you hit 10,000.
Right.
Cause you're gonna, you're definitely gonna have to add police officers. You're, you're, you know, you're probably at that point, you're looking at, uh, how much miles of streets you had and how you're gonna maintain those, what options you're gonna take to use those. Um, and so that, it's looking at this broad spectrum of opportunities and how to, how to manage them. I mean, there are so many different ways to manage them that, that, uh, and you can do a mix of them and try and see what blends best for the community, but you need to start thinking about them. Cause, uh, that's, you know, it's coming up faster than I, than I think.
So of the three things that we need to really start talking about and think about putting into different working sessions, um, have you thought about which is gonna be the priority and how we wanna look at these?
Well, composting needs to be this year. Um, fees, fee schedule, I, you know, it wouldn't be bad to do this year. The staffing study, I, I don't wanna do until the, I would rather have someone else do the staffing study, not me. I did the last one. So all my biases are tied into that. I'd like to get someone else's perspective. And I think Mick and, and, uh, Rob and probably Paul would like to have someone else's perspective.
Yeah, and speaking of that, that's, those are the retirements that we've been talking about. So if you hadn't read between the lines, that's reading between the lines right there.
Yeah, we'll, we'll... We'll have a lot of senior staff retired and, and so we can look at how to reorganize and, and then tie those together and then redistribute down to the system and, but then it'll also try and give us an idea of, well, this is how much, a lot of times they'll do like, you know, Mick's always talking about one police officer for every 700 people. Uh, they'll try and tie that into every type of category so that you kind of get an idea of how to build a, a staff over the next 20 years.
Got it.
Uh, and they may even look at, you know, changing some of the organizational structure to better, better handle it. But, um, that one, I, I'm, I'm thinking that we need to budget that one. That needs to go out into the next fiscal year and then as soon after that as we can, we can make an adjustment. I know Mick's looking for some adjustments soon. I think we can work in some things that are on the low end. The advantage is, is that at the end of '22, we get TID 2, get our full TID $2 in and we'll have some, a little bit more money to work with than we might normally have.
Got it.
Do we have any ideas as to how much this will cost, Steve?
The study?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's probably gonna be, depending on what we look for, between 15 and, and 30,000.
Okay, and that's a lump sum or is that over a course of time?
Um, it's generally over the course of time. They, they'll, they'll want, uh, a beginning retainer and they're probably at a 50% mark and then at the end, when you accept the report.
Okay, so we're hoping that, that they can do this staff report and do it in less than, what amount of time are we looking at here?
I would say four to five months.
Okay.
It depends on how much talking Mick does.
They're, they're making fun of you, Mick. You better speak up.
Yeah, I'm hearing that. Um, you know, basically my concern is that if we don't get the study done soon enough, uh, nobody's gonna be able to budget for it for 2022. So this in essence creates a delay pushing us into 2023, um, once the study is, you know, given to us in '22. So, um, you know, I think, you know, my needs are a little more immediate than that and, you know, I'm, you know, I, I presented a, a thing to the city council last year, 30 pages. I'm revamping some of that and looking at some other features. Um, I know some of the things Steve talked about, you know, potentially having civilians, you know, part, on a part-time basis, doing certain things. Uh, I saw some of that, uh, on Facebook recently after an article that went in the paper and, uh, some of that, I, I understand in some of the bigger agencies, when they're dealing with volume on a daily basis, they can bring those people in. But we're talking, you know, some of these things are based on how the day went and it's gonna be a variety, you know, once we had somebody on a call-in basis. But even then, the individual officer has to be the one to, uh, document that because they're the only one that knows, uh, you know, what the evidence is that they brought in or knows what the videotape is that they're downloading. Um, so it's very officer-specific. It's just time-consuming and it's a little bit here and a little bit there and it just adds up. Um, I will, I will take a look. Uh, we've got things, uh, the, the dispatcher staff do that used to be police officer work. Uh, we've got things that officers are doing that used to be supervisor work. Um, if you start looking at IT solutions, uh, those guys charge three times what a comp costs. So, um, you know, I'm willing to have these conversations, but, um, if you're talking about 2023 for an officer, you know, I'm gonna, I'm just gonna keep plugging away, I guess, on, on, uh, you know, getting that information out to you guys and, and answering questions as best I can so you understand our need.
I, I hear you, Mick. I'm, I'm just asking when, when, well, actually, when do you need to have your budget in by? I'm, this I don't know.
Uh, usually, well, Steve, you can answer that better, but, uh, I think usually we have at least a draft in by July.
So we need to approve to have this done before that budget comes, is, is due? Is that what I'm hearing?
No, his budget to me comes in. I, generally I ship out a budget to them, um, in May. And then in July, they ship back a budget and then we kind of go back and forth in September, finalize the budgets. And then I have a count, I have a budget for council on, uh, first week in September. And, uh, that then, um, you guys work on until the first week in November. And that's, that, from the first week in September till the, I'm gonna give you a budget that has it in there based on the conversations that we've had. You could make a decision sometime in that time period, but by first meeting in November, you're gonna levy for it one way or the other. You're either gonna cut it out, not levy, or you're gonna put it in and we'll have a staffing study. And that's '22, that's as soon as we could do that type of work.
Okay.
Yep.
All right. Hey, thanks for all the input, Mick.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, that moves us on to, whoops, item I, resolution 21-10. Can I get that read, please?
Resolution 21-10, resolution declaring official intent to reimburse expenditures from proceeds of borrowing.
All right. Could I get a motion of adoption for resolution 21-10?
I move adoption of resolution 21-10.
Thank you, Vicki. Is there a second?
I seconded.
Thank you, Michelle. Uh, so I believe we're gonna go to Betsy for this one, right? Hi, Betsy. We haven't heard from you yet today, even though we know you got a new employee now.
We can't hear you, Betsy.
Yeah, it doesn't, it doesn't look like your mic is off. It just...
It's not working again.
Yeah. Is she at home or should be?
No, she's here.
She's here? Huh. Well, we fixed one issue for another one.
She's gonna come in and use mine.
Okay, good.
I'm waiting with you.
Good.
This is the second time her mic has, has gone. It must reset at some point when something updates.
Yeah.
Does she have a headset like you, Steve?
No, she's got a old-fashioned plug-in camera.
Well, I'm, yeah, the, I was using my other computer. That one seems to be working better, but not this time. I apologize. Can you move it now?
I hear you. Perfect.
Okay, I'm in Misty's office. Well, thank you, Misty. Uh, this is a, a resolution that we do when we are going to borrow during the year. So we have to, it's more of a housekeeping item. We have to declare our intent to reimburse ourselves because we will be making purchases prior to receiving the funds for the borrowing. So, um, in the section three, we have an, an amount in there. We are not tied to that amount. This is just our estimate at this time. If we find there's items in our budget that we aren't going to be borrowing for, after all, we are not, um, required to borrow for those because of this resolution. It, it does not tell us that we have to borrow any specific amount. We are the same, in fact, it will be about this amount. Um, I've attached the, uh, capital items that we expect to finance. So it includes the general fund and the utility. The utility, um, right now we're planning on only borrowing water funds. Um, you can see toward the bottom of each of those two sections, there's revenue that's applied. So for instance, there's certain amount of property tax, $8,000 that we expect to collect that will be applied toward these, um, capital items, just as an example. Uh, so this is really just a, an annual, whenever we're gonna be borrowing type of resolution so that we are in compliance with the, uh, regulations, uh, as they are set up for borrowing. So if you have any questions?
Yeah, I got one.
Okay.
Betsy, what do you, what do you think this is gonna put us at for our limit for borrowing?
Um, we're, we're getting up there a little bit, but we, we haven't reached our cap yet. So, so we, we have quite a, I don't have the number in front of me to say where we are in that required cap. Steve, are you...
Yeah, we're actually lower than we were last year.
Low before we, or after we borrowed?
Yes, after we borrowed this year, we will, we will still be lower than last year. A combination of less borrowing and, uh, uh, higher assessed values. So our percentage went down, you know, about 4%. Still higher than normal, but, uh, in, in sync with our plan that we, you know, that we were, when we started borrowing on a shorter term, we knew our debt was gonna go up and then come back down fast. And so, yeah, it's, it's pretty consistent with where we were. One of the items that kind of is a little bit off is, is that, you know, Brookstone Six and Brookstone Seven were special assessment borrowings we hadn't originally planned on. But they sold enough of those houses this year that I think we, we borrowed a little over 800, 840,000 and we've already got 760 back. You know, and they, I'm sure that by the July of, of, uh, this year, we'll be fully paid back on that special assessment.
Okay.
Then so that's, you know, we didn't even borrow, the Brookstone Seven is a million-dollar job and we're, we're not even borrowing that full amount because we have enough money from the previous special assessment paid in already and we're just gonna use that money again. So it, it worked out pretty well for us actually, even though we, we hadn't planned for that. We, uh, when you actually go in and do the borrowing, it kind of looks a little stressful. But with the payback period and the new assessed value, it worked out great, dropped us faster than I thought we were gonna go.
Okay, so we're still gonna be, I'm assuming they're still rating us at double A minus?
Yep.
So the development TID five, 1.3 million in there? What did we have that listed for?
Um, we had some for TOPLES, some for, um, formal and some for STIBs.
And that's, uh, okay, that's the TID money?
Yeah.
Got it.
It didn't, it didn't actually come out to 1.3 million, but we put that in there and so we just left it there. If it's less, we don't borrow.
Got it, and that makes sense. And then the TID will pay us back on that. Right? Okay. Does anybody else have any questions on this? No? Okay, let's go ahead and call the real call boat, please.
Ms. Schmidt? Ms. Quinno?
Hi.
Mr. Prother?
Hi.
Motion to ask review.
All right, that brings us up to recommendations for future agendas and I, I think we have a lot of those already that have already been talked about. Is there anything that we haven't mentioned for the upcoming meeting?
I have two items. I have the new industrial park and the Sandy Beach restaurant.
Okay.
Now I have memos on those available. Now I have memos on those available, uh, similar to tonight, like tonight's.
Okay.
Pay those issues.
Yeah, I, I know the one in particular, Sandy Beach one. Um, that we will be asking for a lot of the input from the community on that one. So hopefully we can exercise our pole, pole software for some of this and some of the other things. So I've just been a little preoccupied unfortunately the past couple of weeks. To get that pushed out for the one I wanted for, uh,
Logo.
Logo. Um, as a matter of fact, and that's something I probably should talk to Ms. Quinno about is the logo. Um, at a, at a different time. We can just talk on that, Michelle. Okay, uh, is there anything else that you want to mention? Anybody else wanna mention anything?
Yeah, I just wanted to be able to discuss, uh, January board meeting minutes from Parksport.
Okay. And you want that on the next, well, whenever it's, uh, whenever it's approved, correct? Is that what you're asking?
Yes, please.
Perfect. You got it. Yeah, we'd appreciate that too. Um, uh, what we, what we've been trying to do is things come up and things move from the different commissions into our realm, then we'll have that council person discuss it and talk about it as those things come up for our votes. But, uh, once the minutes are approved and put in record, yeah, then definitely we can have you bring that stuff up to everybody, um, here. So.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, yep. All right. Then if that is it, we stand adjourned.